Matt, it seems like years ago, that was seven days ago on Wednesday. And I want to thank everybody for your reflections then, and we'll have more to talk about today. But first, I need to remind everyone that we're getting so good at this WebEx skills. We're still under an emergency order and conducting our meeting under Minnesota statutes, section 13D point 021. It is live streaming, so if you want to hear what you said, you can always look it up again. It's being recorded. If there are members of the public and would like to make comments, I encourage members of the public to email us at public.info@metc.state.mn.us. And as always, when you're making out comments, if you have your, state your name. So those that are just listening and not like me who's watching will know who you are. And we're going to do a few roll calls, not that many. We're going to have a chance for an information item and also discussions. But to start, just to take attendance, Liz, can you call the roll call for, to know we have a quorum?
Yes. Atlas Ingabretson?
Here.
Barbara?
Here.
Chambliss?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Fredson?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Lilligrum? Lindstrom?
Here.
Musei?
Here.
Sterner?
Here.
Bento?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Zuren?
President.
I'm president.
Okay. Chair Zelli?
Here. I think we have a quorum. The first order of business is approval of an agenda. And I would like to ask for a motion in a second to approve an modified agenda, such that I described in the email, really having an advance opportunity to hear from Met Council staff about the last week in a number of areas, of a chance to ask questions at the end. And then we'll have some time for a kind of a general discussion about some of the tasks at hand and where we as Met Council are in this time. So is there a motion for the amended agenda?
Lindstrom moves the amended agenda.
Thank you, Peter. Please second. Thank you, Liz.
Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Chambliss?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Fredson?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musei?
Aye.
Sterner?
Aye.
Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zuren?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. That motion carried. And now, the order of business is approval of the minutes. That was from our May 20th, 2020 meeting. Liz sent them out in advance. Is there a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
No to approve, Cummings.
Thank you, Molly. Second?
Second, Bento.
Thank you, Sue. Any discussion? Hearing none, Liz?
Atlas Ingabretson?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Chambliss?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Ferguson?
Aye.
Fredson?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Lindstrom?
Aye.
Musei?
Aye.
Sterner?
Aye.
Bento?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Zuren?
Aye.
Chair Zelli?
Aye. So that the minutes are adopted. So now, we're going to have a chance to hear some of what's happened very specifically with Met Council activity in the past seven days. I will say, and we could spend, we could spend a long time processing this. And I so value what all of you coming with your open hearts and ears. I think that, you know, when I think about where we were just last Wednesday with the shock, and now with the reaction, it all makes sense. But it still doesn't make it less painful. And knowing that each of us really represents a pretty broad spectrum in our region. And we all come from a different place. We come from, with our own personal, very important perspectives and experiences. And I think each one of those is really important. And so I am looking forward to hearing and talking and even getting some questions. I think it's first maybe helpful to kind of know what our various divisions were doing. And at a time that was clearly a crisis and in times when there was less than perfect information. But I've been impressed, I have to say, being a little close to it and working kind of around the clock with many of your leaders here within the, within the agency, who were really leading with their values, but knowing that there's going to be some tough choices. And I think it would be helpful not to go too long, but to kind of get a kind of overview, some of which we know and some of which we don't know. But it would be kind of grounding, I think, for this conversation to know at least about, not about opinions, and we'll get chance for thoughts, but kind of a lot of what the facts were, kind of to help us know kind of where your Met Council was. And maybe, and I think a way to start would be Lisa Barajas, who with great generosity in her time and has over the past month or so, under the part of her position description that says other duties as assigned was really became our first frontline overseer representative of the encampments, the homeless issues that were really building slowly. And then ultimately came to really an even bigger crisis. And worked a lot with others at Met Council, including Met Transit, including our Met Police. But it's been gratifying for me because I got to know Lisa a lot better. And knowing that the, this was done at a time when you, Lisa, are living right in the middle of where you hear sirens and, and there's, and there's none of this even for our staff to be understood, this is not divorced from the personal affect it has on us and our families. So Lisa, thank you. Maybe you can just tell us a little bit about, I mean, you know, we can go back months, but just the past seven days have been pretty interesting. And why don't you start us off and give us a little overview?
Thank you, Chair Zelli, Council members. I think we find ourselves in a very different position than where we were a week ago after our last meeting, as Chair Zelli said. For the record, I'm Lisa Barajas, the Community Development Director, for those who are listening. And as Chair Zelli said, I kind of live right in the middle of this neighborhood, less than a mile from the third precinct. So in it all the time and not able to subtract myself from the ongoing activities in my own neighborhood. That being said, the last time, I think I gave an update to, I think it was the Community Development Committee, the last time we met on the work we were doing, supporting folks residing at the encampment that's on council property or was on council property along Hiawatha Avenue near the Midtown Greenway. We were actively working with a variety of social service providers in the community to help connect residents to permanent housing and shelter options that met their needs. And given the size of the encampment, we had, I think, 60 to 70 tents with a number of people in each tent at any given day, lots of fluctuation up and down day to day and that. But a number of folks residing at the encampment with a variety of different needs, a lot of different resource needs, different ages, different health conditions. And so we're working with all of our partners to ensure that we could maintain as sanitary of conditions as we could on the site, given that it was outdoors, without running water, without the type of conditions that you would expect to see in a permanent shelter. But doing our best to, to improve and keep the site as sanitary as possible, socially distancing the tents and connecting with social service providers. We had created a by-name list so that we could do that direct connection in partnership with folks and only working with residents who wanted to work with us. We weren't forcing anybody to work with us in that regard. And some folks, for various reasons, weren't unwilling to provide their names, for example, to be able to connect to social service providers. And that is their right to do so. So that was, that was the plan we were working on. And after our council meeting last week, conditions in the neighborhood quickly escalated with the extent of fires in and properties near to the encampment, incredibly near, right next door, and within less than a quarter mile where the third precinct is. A lot of, a lot of activity, a lot of police presence, and really conditions that were already unsafe or not the best for long-term or prolonged living. And now were significantly worsened. Thursday morning, staff, we quickly convened first thing in the morning and decided that we needed to evacuate that site because it was not going to be safe for residents to be there. And we needed to move them to safe options. We, I think, sprinted a marathon in about 12 hours and worked with all of the service providers, our partners in state government in the city of Minneapolis, in Hennepin County, to find housing or hotel and motel options that were going to be social service-supported, that we could move residents to before sundown. That was, our goal was to evacuate before sundown. We had expected conditions to be as volatile as they were the night before on Wednesday night, on Thursday night as well. So in partnership with my colleagues in Metro Transit and Transit Police, we worked with residents immediately to let them know that that's what we were working on. We wanted to evacuate them. We did not find that this, the conditions on the site were going to remain any safer for them. And so even before we had options available for them, we were letting them know that that's what we were working toward and that we were looking for those options for them to move that day. We asked folks who were wanting to take us up on those offers of evacuation to gather their personal belongings so that we could also do, ensure that we were bringing those along as well, that we weren't leaving things behind that they didn't want to leave behind. By seven o'clock that evening, maybe it was eight, I don't, it kind of blurs a little bit in my head. We were, we had, were able to get at least 70 of our residents onto buses and all of their personal belongings onto a third bus. And we're able to connect them with shelter options in two locations at the metro in partnership with our social service partners in Hennepin County. I can't say enough how much I appreciate how quickly people sprung to action to help figure out and find those options. But we weren't able to get everybody. The conditions had quickly deteriorated in the vicinity. It wasn't safe for folks to stay there. And we knew we weren't going to be able to take everybody that evening. But we did promise to come back the next morning. So unfortunately, we weren't able to evacuate everyone that we had intended. We had left about 10 or 15 people behind. By next morning, we returned first thing in the morning. And folks were there along with about 15 additional people who may have migrated from other encampments in the area. And we worked to evacuate the remaining folks by noon that day. We had to identify some additional shelter options because the other social service-supported options had been filled up. We needed about 15 more. So we were able to find those and move people out by noon that day. We are glad we were able to do that. It was not a safe condition for anyone to be outside unsheltered in, in any sense of the word. And we continue to work with our partners on making those connections to social service providers because this is not the permanent option. This isn't housing. It is a temporary safe location for people. And since then, we just kind of continued to tie up some loose ends around, you know, all the paperwork you have to do on procurement, funding, stuff like that. But continuing to work with our local government partners and social services partners to support residents in their current locations and ensure their safety and connection to future permanent housing options.
Thank you, Lisa. I know that was a very brief, but it was not at the time anything that was very small. And it continues to be an option now. We have our housing, you know, task force. It includes homelessness and this continues, our work continues. But it was responding to difficult situations. I'm just going to ask everybody to kind of hold questions because let's kind of get the information out there. And I know maybe just shifting over to Transit and maybe Wes, if you're in the room, you might kind of introduce those who you would like and maybe give us an update as to all the different fascinations that Transit and our related transportation activity, including law enforcement. Wes?
Chair Zelli, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. Our planned update will include information on the Metro Transit Police's engagement with the Multi-Agency Command Center with the events surrounding our decision to suspend service with Metro Transit and MTS's engagement with the Multi-Agency Command Center. I'll refer to it as MAC from now on, it's easier. And then the current status of our resumings, of the resuming of services. Chief Frazel is here, Nick Thompson is here. And I also have Vince Pellegren available too when questions are being asked later on. But before I invite Chief Frazel to speak, I just need to say that the horrific consensus killing of George Floyd last Monday is overwhelming and heartbreaking for Metro Transit staff and for Metro Transit as a whole. Likewise, the eruptions of violence and looting and fires across the neighborhood in Minneapolis and St. Paul are also heartbreaking to all of us. We have a diverse workforce and many employees are processing and experiencing this in very personal ways. We also have a workforce that has always been and certainly emphasizing now it's committed to our communities. And that's both in very professional ways and very personal ways. Our staff's sense of community is really grounded in our mission and our charge. But like Lisa, many of Metro Transit staff live in the communities that have suffered so much. So we're all grieving in very different ways. Each of us sees us through our own lens and through our very personal knowledge and life experience. We spoke about this at our Monday Senior Staff Meeting that includes about 50 or so Metro Transit leaders. And we first acknowledged that we are in this together and that we rely on each other's grace and generosity because we are sometimes quite overwhelmed as we process what has happened. Council members, I want you to know that we have incredible staff at Metro Transit, incredible operators, mechanics, facilities and maintenance workers, police officers, planners, communicators, leaders and others. They're remarkable. Over the past week and over the past months, they have been responsive, tireless, focused and thoughtful, even as this past week they needed to process these terrible events. They've done a remarkable job with every unimaginable challenge that's brought before them this week. I can't say enough about how proud I am to work beside them. It's just been quite something to be part of. At this point, I want to invite Chief Frazel to speak to Metro Transit Police's engagement with the Multi-Agency Command Center. I want to mention that Metro Transit Police Department has, while being part of the Multi-Agency Command Center, has also been instrumental in the safe and respectful evacuation of a number of encampments. And in all cases, alternative housing was provided. So with your permission, Chair, I'll invite Chief Frazel to speak about the Metro Transit Police role.
That's great. Thanks, welcome, chief.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chair, Council members, Chief Eddie Frazel with Metro Transit Police Department. I will echo what the GM said. It's been an incredible all-hands-on-deck for multi-pronged situations that have erupted across the metro area, up into including the tragic death of Mr. Floyd. I personally feel the energy that came out of that, and it's not a second goes by that I don't feel for his family, the symbolism of it all and the overall effects that have now found its way around the world. That so, with that being said, that just shows the significant impact of this one event. I would also mention that I spent six years of my young life in the third precinct. And as we were out on Lake Street during the height of the violence, to watch my old neighborhood, the sore neighborhood go up in flames, including the only local grocery store, Target, in the precinct itself due to some of the wrongdoers that were integrating themselves into the peaceful protest. It was, it was very, very surreal for me. However, all the officers were doing their duty. In the midst of a pandemic, we've had to change the force structure three times on the fly in order to be able to properly protect our property, our operators, as well as maintenance and our facilities. We had initially been in a pandemic configuration where we were trying to prevent cross-contamination that literally destroyed the resources and capabilities of like-sized departments across the country just due to exposures and those going out on the COVID-19 sickness. But our plan initially was very effective as we've had one of the lowest absenteeism in the state. So we had a full force to integrate into the mobile field forces and the state's plan to address some of the, not only the civil unrest, but some of the violence that came along with it. And everyone that was watching the news was able to watch that. I took a very direct approach with that as I was directing a lot of our forces from on the ground to make sure that there was humane treatment of how we were integrating in that mobile field force and not to allow someone else to take over our Metro Transit Police Department and put them in a position that wasn't very applicable to the situation at hand. So with that being said, we did not use any of our Metro Transit assets as arrest buses or detainee buses, but just reacted in roles of support when asked by the Governor's Office and the Commissioner of Public Safety. In that regard, we were very successful. And then one incident that we did have to apply our police powers, it was being termed as textbook. By the end of the initial booking processes on scene, the actual individuals that were being identified and taken into custody were literally very amiable and smiling and talking with officers and bonding on scene, which was unique to see during that type of high emotion and sensitivities at a high level. To be able to perform at that matter, my hat goes off not only to our Metro Transit partners and to include operators, but our officers on the ground. So we, as an organization, did not sustain any injuries. We had one unfortunate event on the first day when individuals tried to essentially utilize our resources without the notification of us and then put our driver and operator and our equipment into harm's way. That was quickly addressed. And I can glad to say with the help of the GM and Vince and our other partners, Brian, and different elements of the entire Metro Transit family, we were able to continue operations without having that hiccup reappear during the operational period. We've been running on 24 hour ops for the last seven days. We're receiving intelligence that there, this is still not over tomorrow. It's going to be probably one of the largest eulogies in Minnesota history with Reverend Al Sharpton coming to town, four blocks from our facility up at the North Central College. It'll be a worldwide event. And again, we'll make sure that professionalism and the protecting of our brand, as well as our operators and the community at large, will be one of our primary objectives. Then the next day, it's not announced to the public yet, but I would just say that a very high public official has planned to come to 38th and Chicago. That could have any number of second and third order effects. But we are poised to react as necessary to, again, to make sure that we're protecting our properties and operators. And we started a pivot 48 hours ago away from the state's mobile field force type of activities to directly protecting and walking through all of our facilities to make sure that they are all set, both from a safety and security standpoint, for the return of service. We've been taking at least a third of every shift to make sure that as our mechanics and operators and civilian staff start to return to these facilities, we have National Guard individuals that are standing in static positions to assist with those security, as well as riding some of our buses that are being used for transport vehicles as a part of the team effort. We also have a dedicated squad to every bus that's going in there. And we've been utilizing a new tactic that we're simply calling drop and go. So the buses are not remaining in those areas, but just doing what they can to deliver those individuals that need to go there. And we've been very successful in developing standard operating procedures as we go because let's face it, we're writing this playbook as we go. We've never had a pandemic, mass riots and other activities to try to assist in the safety and security of firing up a transfer system, transportation system that's never gone down for this length of time before. So we're providing safety teams for those that are out inspecting the lines to make sure that we can alleviate those fears. They're doing inspections on our infrastructure. And again, they have MPBD, excuse me, MTBD out there making sure that we're protecting our assets in that regard. So standby to standby, we're keeping you informed on three to four meetings a day with the intel that I'm receiving and making sure that we're remaining flexible and fluid in this very dynamic environment. And I can say as now as I'm knocking a wood, no injuries, no major damage to any of our facilities, as well as no follow-on damage to any of our transportation assets.
Chair Zelli, I'll move to a brief summary of Metro Transit and MTS's activities, if that's okay with you.
That would be great. Thanks, Wes.
All right. Well, last Thursday, we made a sequence of decisions that resulted in suspension of all Metro Transit services. And I want to emphasize that these decisions were based on our concern about the safety of our riders and employees. We've said many times that safety is our number one priority. So our intent was to be proactive in preventing something bad from happening rather than waiting to react to something bad that has happened. Early Thursday morning- Early Thursday morning, uh, we suspended Blue Line before its service start due to what was occurring on Lake Street. It's in, in an area that was so near our O and M facility. By mid-morning Thursday, we received reports from Chief Frazel of expected disruptions on University Avenue near Snelling and Tanlet. Uh, with that information, we immediately decided to suspend Green Line service. Uh, this proved to be the right call as we were able to remove our trains from the university area just prior to the destructive events occurring at the Target Store in that area. And then the, that went on to spill into adjacent businesses, including, uh, the large fire at the Napa Autopod Store. Uh, just before noon on that same day on Thursday, uh, we decided to suspend all bus service by four PM that day after receiving additional reports of other expected protests and potential violence at the downtown and other more outlying areas around the region. After informing the Chair and the Governor's Office of plans to, to suspend all services, uh, we were able to issue a notice to the public, uh, about the four PM suspension time. Uh, by about one thirty PM that afternoon, uh, we made also some calls to individuals in downtown areas, leaders to tell them, uh, uh, to give, give, give their employees a heads up to be able to catch, catch transit in. But of course, this was a difficult decision because it, it did, uh, leave some people, uh, who are expecting rides home behind. Uh, I should mention that we did receive requests to suspend service by the Society of St. Paul on Thursday. Uh, but this was after we'd already made the call to do so. Uh, by this time, we'd had enough information about the continuation of potential safety issues across the region to warrant suspending these services, uh, through the weekend. Once that decision was made, uh, we relocated all light rail vehicles from the Franklin O and M facility due to that, it's, uh, uh, that facility's proximity to the fires and looting on Lake Street. Uh, we also relocated Niklet Garage buses due to the, its proximity of the Niklet Garage to the fifth precinct. We moved about a hundred and seventy buses from Niklet in a short amount of time. We moved, uh, sixty-three, I believe, light rail vehicles from Franklin in a short amount of time. When it was apparent Sunday that the suspension of service would continue into Monday, we asked MTS to expand their, uh, Metro Mobility program from only essential healthcare workers to include all essential workers identified in the original Governor's, uh, directive for the duration of the, our service suspension. With respect to our involvement in the mutual aid activities, uh, and with the MAC, uh, Metro Transit has continues, has, uh, has, it continues to provide buses and operators as a mutual aid to the Governor in his response. As of this morning, I believe we fulfilled, uh, over a hundred and sixty work orders from the MAC. Our role in cooperation with the MAC or the Multi-Agency Command Center are a result of the council's status as an administrative agency of the Executive Branch. It's a result of our obligation to be responsive to the Governor's orders during emergency declaration. And we also have very specific obligations as a signed participant of the, of the Minnesota Emergency Operations Plan. Initially, we were asked by the Governor's Office and the simple command to provide both transport for first responders and transport of people brought under arrest. We asked that our role be limited to the transport of first responders as we were concerned about the particip- about participating as arrest vehicles, uh, both in terms of public response and in terms of safety issues, uh, regarding the entering of hotspots, uh, during civil unrest. We were able to work through a solution, uh, with the help of Nick Thompson at MTS to offer retired former Metro Mobility buses that could be used for arrests and that could be driven by state troopers and other emergency personnel. In a moment, Nick will provide, uh, more detail on that aspect of our participation. I want to say that despite media reports to the contrary, we've not used Metro Transit vehicles or staff for the purpose of transporting arrests. Again, our priority has been on the safety of our staff. So with the role of transporting first responders, we have very specific protocols in place. Uh, as the chief mentioned, we're trying to limit our services to drop and go services. Uh, we, we, we are preventing our buses from going into the hotspots of the unrest and we are providing buses with Metro Transit Police or other, uh, security personnel protection. Again, as the chief mentioned, there was a breach of these protocols on Friday night. Our bus was brought too close and left without security. And as a result, uh, the bus was approached by protesters and the, and the window was broken. I want to thank again, uh, Chief Frazel and others for bringing this issue immediately to the MAC and getting it corrected. Uh, we are still engaged in this supportive role. We have requests, uh, for both today, uh, both this morning and this afternoon. And then we have requests for, for buses again tomorrow. Uh, so with that, I'll, I'll invite Nick Thompson to provide an overview of MTS's activities in this regard.
Thank you, Wes. Chair and council members, Nick Thompson, Director of MTS. So beginning of last week, as you know, we, we had kind of transformed the Metro Mobility and Transling Services due to COVID into mostly essential trips for our customers, um, trying to limit those trips. Uh, but also we were starting private essential worker trips for healthcare workers on Metro Mobility and that food delivery and grocery, grocery and food bank delivery. Um, when Metro Transit and council made the decision to suspend transit service, we looked at whether we should suspend Metro Mobility and Transit Link also. But we determined that, uh, we were down to the minimalist trips that we could and those trips were essential. Most of our Metro Mobility trips at that point were for customers that had to get to medical appointments that were essential. We also knew that, uh, without, uh, transit service, that the essential worker trips would be important to continue those trips and that food delivery was going to be incredibly important to many. So we made the decision that we could safely, we felt we could safely continue to operate, uh, the, those services. Though in working with our operators, we gave them full discretion that, uh, at any time they can cancel a trip if they felt that it was in an area that was unsafe. And we asked them to delegate that to their drivers to make that call. Um, I can, uh, proud to say that our contractors, they worked with it and that I doubt believe they ended up canceling any of the trips that were requested and booked. So it, it worked out very well. There was no, uh, safety issues reported by our contractors, um, nor any issues from the drivers. Uh, so it was, it was important that we continued that service. As Wes mentioned, on Sunday, we made the decision to expand, uh, the essential worker from healthcare workers to all workers. Um, as we looked ahead and saw that the transit service would remain suspended. Um, that was quickly, that expansion of service was quickly, um, used by our customers out there because they needed to get to work, um, to the point that we basically, almost by today, had almost as many essential worker food delivery trips as our normal Metro Mobility trips. Uh, we got close to being at capacity of the service of essential workers, but, uh, proud to say that our contractors worked it out so they never had to deny a requested ride. And, um, that really, it, it did end up to be the right decision, um, and was good. And I want to specifically call out, uh, we, across our contractors and staff, they have about fifteen hundred people between, um, support and drivers and that. And so I wanted to acknowledge First Transit, Transit Team, MPS, MB and Schmiedian Sons. For the past weekend through COVID, they've done everything we've asked to them. I'm almost nervous to really change that service from what they were under contract to do. The drivers have been fantastic. Uh, their staff has been great. So I want to acknowledge that and thank them for that. On the request for mutual aid for buses, uh, to transport, um, both law enforcement, we anticipated National Guard and transport, uh, people that were arrested. Uh, late last week, we looked into our system, uh, for MTS and identified that we had sixty buses that were, um, Metro, formerly Metro Mobility buses that were at the auction site or about to be at the auction site. These are buses that, uh, are retired from service, uh, very high mileage and tough condition, but that we always auction off. And we notified the MAC that, that we had these buses available for them if they would, uh, choose to select those. And ultimately, they did a mutual aid request for thirty-nine of the buses to be delivered to three locations throughout the metro area. So on Saturday, we, uh, worked to deliver those buses to the locations. Um, in general, mo- almost all these buses are ones that we've, uh, prior to auction, we've removed council logos from them, um, and identification of them, um, though they did still have some, a couple of them had logos and some had the familiar blue stripe of Metro Mobility. Um, so that, there was some, led to some misconception in some of the news stories that they were Metro Mobility buses. In essence, they were retired buses that had been turned over to law enforcement. Law enforcement was appreciative of these in that they're smaller buses. They don't require a commercial driver's license to, uh, travels. So they were ones that were, uh, flexible for them. Those buses, um, by, by Monday, we had asked our contractors to go and remove any remaining identification and striping. And so now I think all those buses, they remain in the possession of law enforcement under the direction of the Minnesota State Patrol, but they have no markings anymore that indicate that they were formerly Metro Mobility buses. So, um, we anticipate that they will remain in their, uh, possession until they're returned to us. And then when those buses are returned to council possession, we will, uh, return them back and have them auctioned off. Um, in terms of our Metro Mobility Services and Transling Services, to, through today, we'll continue to provide essential worker trips to anybody who asks for those. But with service starting, resuming today, which Wes will talk about now and light rail tomorrow, uh, we feel we're going to go back, starting tomorrow, to the, and the operations we had in place for COVID, but prior to last week, where Metro Mobility will continue to do food delivery, uh, for a while before we transition that to Transit Link. They'll continue to provide essential worker rags for healthcare workers until we demand returns. Um, but, um, we will be more limited in the central work trips like we were, uh, up until, or up until this past weekend. And with that, I'll turn it over back to Wes to talk about return to service.
Wes, thanks. Thanks, Nick.
With respect to, uh, Chair Zelli, is it okay if I move into return to services?
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, as far as, uh, bringing services back online, uh, we've, of course, been anxious to resume services. Uh, that's what we're proud of providing. And of course, we have many, many people who, uh, need our services and have been very anxious for that return. On Sunday, uh, we announced that barring any serious complications, we plan to resume bus service in North Star on Wednesday, today, and light rail service on Thursday. We know that to go days without any regular transit service is incredibly difficult for so many of our riders. And we are truly sorry we had to take these, make these decisions that create significant hardships to those that depend on our services. In some ways, it felt like stopping services was an irony. But we will still always place safety of our riders and operators first. And regardless, these are, these are difficult calls to make. And these were made with concern for our riders. I want to emphasize that. Uh, we talked about potential impact. We talked about the safety risks and we made the best decision we could. And I, I still, uh, support and believe that was, that was the right decision to make. Our planning and evaluation of a safe return to service necessarily included information on the potential of continued civil unrest, as well as an assessment of the damage to our infrastructure. We were able to return to bus service today, although we are running the Niklet Garage buses out of the South Garage because it was, because it, it was recommended to wait another day to return to operations at the Niklet Garage, uh, due to its proximity to Lake Street and the fifth precinct. Bus, bus operations had put together backup plans for this potential delay, uh, in returning buses to the Niklet facility. So I'm proud and pleased to say that bus services have gone smoothly today, even with the number of detours that have been necessary. We're on the street. We're providing service. It gives us a new energy and, and, uh, I can't say enough for the, for the bus ops and the service planners that, that put together this plan, uh, and did so, actually working out of, having Niklet work out of the South Garage. For light rail services, we were required to inspect, reboot and return our light rail cars back to the O and M, O and M facility, as well as to inspect track and substation signals, gate arms and other sticks, other infrastructure that it, that may have been damaged, uh, during the unrest and during the fires and looting. In addition, uh, Lake Street Blue Line needed a number of repairs as, uh, Lake Street, the Lake Street Blue Line Station needed a number of repairs as we found that significant broken glass and both, and the, the, uh, unavailability of both elevators and escalators would not allow for service to, to be provided there. So temporary repairs have already been made, uh, and we're happy to say that we'll be able to use that station when we open tomorrow. I'm very pleased to say we've completed the testing of the critical light rail infrastructure. And again, light rail services are a go beginning tomorrow morning at six AM. Uh, I believe that the public confirmation of light rail services beginning, uh, and, and resuming, uh, has our, that public, the public notice has already gone out, I think, uh, around four PM today. There's still a lot of damage that needs to be repaired across, uh, some of our routes. Uh, operations, engineering and facilities with the support of police are well into this damage assessment. And they have also begun much of the cleanup and repair. Uh, I will say that our operations staff or our maintenance staff have reported back how impressed they are with the communities. They said they expected to go back to some of our facilities and find a complete mess, but the communities had gotten there ahead of them. And, uh, they remarked about, uh, how much they appreciated and how impressed they were with the, with the communities, uh, rising up to this and, and, and dealing with this and cleaning their communities and, and also helping us with our infrastructure at the same time. So our appreciation goes out to that effort and it's, that's been impressive by everyone's account. So with that, uh, Chair Zelli, I believe we're, we're finished with the update.
I want to leave a, thank you, Wes, and thank you, uh, Lisa and, uh, and Nick, uh, and Chief Frazel. Uh, I want to just open it up for a few, just a few questions. I know we want to have a chance to, uh, talk about other issues as well. But any, any questions or thoughts for, uh, for any of our, our leaders?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Uh, this is a council member, Barbara. Just a comment. Chair of the Transportation Committee, I've been in communications all week with, um, General Manager Coystre and Director Thompson. Throughout the whole week, I was so impressed with their professionalism and their leadership. A lot of really quick thinking and actions by our staff really helped to keep our riders, operators, personnel safe. They were able to manage the shutdown of the service, the response to help the people in the encampments, to protect our assets and to continue to move essential workers during the pandemic. I'm also super happy that we've been able to bring service back online in a timely manner. I know there was, they were, they were a lot of conversations in the last few days, how to do that and how to get to these communities because they need to have access to service. And then on top of the, they did all of this while they were really struggling and trying to balance their own sadness and grief with what's happening in the communities at the same time. So I really just want to express my sincere gratitude to Metro Transit, Metro Transit BT and MTS for all the work that they've done. Um, I, I've been completely humbled by what they've accomplished in a very short period of time.
Thank you for saying that. Any other questions, thoughts?
Mr. Chair, can I go?
Sure.
A council member, Lee?
Lee, Lee, sorry. I see you on the right corner.
This morning, I, I got a, a text request, uh, from a community organizer and artist. Her name is Tish Jones and she was wondering, um, if in, in light of the pandemic and as we begin to open up, reopen up our services, if, um, if her and some community organizers can, uh, buy in bulk, um, goal prices and if they could be, um, subsidized, uh, for folks who are, um, experiencing financial hardship in, in this pandemic. And, you know, if, you know, we could take this conversation offline too, but, um, that was a question that came up from one of our constituents today.
Appreciate, appreciate that, uh, that, uh, that idea. And, and we're going to talk about a way to collect some ideas, but, uh, And, and we're going to talk about a way to collect some ideas, but we'll, I don't know if we can get a response at this moment. But let's take that under consideration. Thank you. Any other, I know, yes, Councilmember Fredson, you had your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff and leadership at the council. Through this COVID stuff, I think that what we've gone through as a community the last week has been just really, you know, horrific. And how things were just changing day by day and hour by hour and, and, and just folks having to adapt and help us get through this. So grateful that, for that. I did have a question related to just the, the, as it relates to getting transit systems back up and running. Interested to know what the chief or Wes or you could share as it relates to law enforcement, specifically like state police and our National Guard presence either on buses or light rail or in close proximity, or, or I guess as it relates to buses, like escorts?
Through the Chair, Councilman Fredson, Chief Frizell, I'll, I'll take a chunk of that. Right now, we do have unlimited access to the National Guard troops that have been assigned to this particular mission for the governor. So their primary mission at this time is to protect critical infrastructure. So we've deemed a few of our locations as critical infrastructure, and the National Guard is currently located at those locations. The, the specific buses that have been requested through the MAC to provide transportation to hotspots that are cropping up around the metro area have National Guard soldiers onboard, as well as a dedicated two-person squad to help ease their access in and out of traffic and to make sure the operator in our property remains safe during that drop and go scenario.
Chair Zelli, I, I would also add that the Chief Frizell and I have had a conversation about as we open up service and understanding that there's still the tension out there, that we have Metro Transit Police in the areas of proximity to our service delivery. We can't possibly have a, have, have security personnel on every train or bus, and I don't know that we want to, frankly. But we do, we do want to be strategic in, in how we have resources positioned in case those, those resources are needed. And we have, we've had those conversations about how best to do that and also how to do that with sensitivity to what's been occurring around us lately and, and attitudes towards policing and other, other issues that play into how we can sensibly provide the security our services need without being insensitive to the community.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
One more, one more question if there's one. Yes, please.
This isn't a question, it's just a thought related to the last question. We have contracts in place with the Ambassador Program, and they are a program that specializes in more of a community-oriented approach to maintaining safety and security, particularly with young people. In Minneapolis, in the past, we've worked with the Youth Are Here through coordinated efforts with Minneapolis Public Schools, with the Youth Are Here workers who do the same thing. They are rooted in community. There's also in Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, the youth outreach workers. These groups have been brought in when our efforts with policing have failed and are highly, highly successful and impactful. And I just want to make sure we're remembering them and utilizing them when the time is right and that we don't forget about that.
Chair Zelli, I really appreciate that. I really appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Really helpful. Okay. Councilmember Vento, you have the last word.
Thank you, Chair Zelli. I, I want to just commend Lisa Baraha and her staff for the extraordinary work that they did in working with the encampment. I was going to wait and let Councilmember Lilligren make those remarks, and then it occurred to me he's not on the call. And I also want to, you know, express my gratitude to Councilmember Lilligren as well. On Saturday, when the state and faith leaders spoke, he was one of those leaders. And it just was so moving to hear him speak as well. So to Lisa and to Robert and to everybody who's been working on the issues related to, to the housing, I, I just want to express a lot of gratitude. You've made a difference. And there are so many who we will never know who are so grateful to you for your work.
Thank you, Sue. And I, I appreciate that sentiment. And I should mention that Councilmember Lilligren is way up north with a dear but ill family member and unfortunately kind of off the grid. But I should mention that he was really helpful and, and particularly with relationships and then data community. And, and we toured the site a week, well, last Friday. So I think it was really helpful then, as we kind of had to move quickly and with those relationships of trust. We could, we could dissect the past seven days for the next seven days. And I, and I know we all are interested and we can continue learning along the way as this continues to develop and it's not over, as Wes and Lisa have pointed out and others. But really, if we look back in history and we think it's only about protests and, and, and fires, we will be missing the point that we have been engaged with and what brings us, many of us, to this council, which is to make a, a difference for our region. And one of those differences that we have almost promised ourselves individually and, and, and in our vision is that we are going to make a true progress in, in, in addressing the disparities based on race, the equity being a pillar of our, of our work. And now, as if the pandemic wasn't enough, we have this, you know, kind of just the reality of this pain brought to us front and center. So there have been a lot of statements issued by many organizations, some of which are central to the work and some, of course, essential to all organizations. And I, but I certainly think it is for us. And I, and I think we intend to, to at least say something. You know, sometimes if we say the wrong thing, that's, could be criticized. But if we say nothing, that's just a vacuum for what is in our hearts and our intentions. And so I think it's really helpful with us collected and if you've given some thought, I'd love to hear, for those that are willing to share some thoughts at more of a high level. What would you like to hear that the Met Council is saying right now? And it's a pretty broad issue, but also I know that I just heard a couple of really good ideas. And like the Ambassador's Program, the youth outreach workers, the, what are we doing with Go cards now? And I was talking to Vice Chair Cummings earlier today, and we both thought, would it be helpful to collect in writing ideas, maybe more specific ideas that you have? You might think of them honestly now, but going forward, that we might not have time in an open meeting to email either Molly or myself so that we can kind of collect them for future consideration. And we know that we do such important work on a daily basis. And it is almost heartening, disheartening and heartening when you see how important our transit services are. And I've been hearing from a number of constituents about the loss of transit over the past few days and even today, you know, and, and realizing that it is keeping people out of, out of isolation. And, but there's more that we want. And sometimes it's small things, sometimes it's big things, but sometimes it's action we can take. And I think there's a real urgency about taking action. And I kind of invite all of us, not necessarily to, I know there's ideas coming out of various committees, but, but feel free to, you know, email, put it in writing, and say it to. I want to kind of call out to Councilmember, Alice Anger-Bretson, who really has been a wonderful thought advisor to, to think about a structure where we can capture these ideas. So and I, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate everybody who's kind of been talking to each other and to me as we think about how we, how we go forward. So leaving a half hour is not going to do it justice. I just, but I, I know and I will reiterate that whatever we say, it's never enough. But it's great to hear your voices, as it was last week. And I know that we all come from our own personal space. And I would just say for myself, who grew up with tremendous privilege, and I am reminded of that and grateful and hum, and, and humbled by that. But when I had to stand before a sea of black faces and apologize as the head of an agency that bifurcated a neighborhood in Rondo, St. Paul, it goes in the top two or three experiences of my life to realize that we, as leaders, really have an amazing responsibility. We have to lead, and we have almost a moral and a fiduciary role to make a difference. And, and I think that's humbling, but it also is, is a call to action. So I just kind of leave it there and open it up. If anybody has anything to say or reflection, I'm, I'm saying a half hour, like, like that's going to be enough. I know it's not. So, but I want to at least initiate the conversation. And then we do want to get something out because I think silence is worse. Anybody?
This is Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Okay. So it's so overwhelming as I like to say, but I just want to say as a former refugee, someone who really saw a civil war, it was, you know, to make community and to many, which, and immigrant community, it was so traumatizing to see the burning, loss of wealth and businesses. And just, you know, that flashback and to see, you know, military on the streets, it was so much to digest. The other thing I would like to add is this time, it is time to be bold, not to be careful as an agency. It's time to be, to err on the ride of really being aggressive on pushing really, reinvestments in the eliminating already and investing there and making sure that we boost the region as a regional authority to really address a system in, you know, systematic inequality and lead the region, really prioritize investing in communities of color. That has been really struggling with the, among other things, with, you know, with the British majority, but also with lack of investment. So I'm glad and I'm grateful for all the steps that the council is taking. But right now, I'm calling on all of us, especially the leadership, really, really, really add sense of urgency to our, you know, investment in equity and to make sure that we really lead, not led by others.
Right. Uh, thank you. Molly, did you have a word?
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, I want to reiterate, reiterate that I'm, I'm glad that we are going to come up with a statement. I think that it's really, really important that we make a strong statement. I think that silence implies at some level complicity, and I think that's totally unacceptable. I think that, you know, we reinforcing our idea and our understanding that with our power, with our privilege comes huge responsibility, as you have said, Chair, and that we are committed to accepting that and, and implementing that. I think it's important to remember too that we have two crises going on right now. We have COVID, and then on top of it, we have the unrest. I would, I really like the idea of, you know, we have such broad, creative, responsible individuals on the council who will have many ideas on what the council can do going forward. And it, this is a, some of them can be short-term, that hopefully we can implement quickly and soon that will make a difference. And some of them will be longer term. This is, this is a change of, of, of all kinds of things within our purview. And I think it's important too to remember that we have staff that, as we have heard, have done incredible things and with their professionalism. And I don't know how anybody is even sleeping. And so first, my gratitude for that. But I think we have to remember also that the changes that we want to implement, that we want to look at, that we want to study, we have to make sure there are things that we can do without further overwhelming our staff who are doing remarkable work. And yet I also understand the urgency with which action needs to be taken, commitment needs to be taken. So I'm looking forward to hearing really specific ideas on what council members think we can do going forward. I think from that, we can be really transformative in our work, and I think that's really, really important. So thank you for stepping up. Thank you for the staff. But I'm, I, I think this is an opportunity to, again, come out of these two challenges as a stronger, better, more responsive council, and I look forward to that.
Thank you, Molly. Uh, anyone else?
Chair, this is Councilmember Atlas Anger-Bretson.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Um. We've been sharing ideas with our colleagues on the council for a little over a year. We've been making statements, our thrive lenses, our statements. And things have gotten no better for African Americans in the spaces we are responsible for, our policymakers over, that we manage. And I'll just, I'm going to just speak very honestly with you all as a person, as a human. I know that when I push on these things, or some of my colleagues do, there's frustration with me. There's a lack of, um, a narrative about my colleagues or myself when we push on these things. There's a pushback constantly about how race is not the only thing we should be talking about. But the reality for us is this unrest you're seeing manifested is not something new. It's what's been tearing apart the bodies and the souls of people of color and particularly and specifically black people in our community. And it is perfectly fine. Today, I watched a video of a woman who said, "Stand up." In a room, auditorium full of white people, and she was white, "Stand up if you would like to be treated the way black folks are treated." She repeated this question three times. No one in the room stood up. Then she asked, "So why are you okay with the way black folks are treated?" Because you know it. You know what it is. I have a request that we not talk about ideas, but we talk about commitments to action that we are going to take, that we are going to take in the next thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, and the next year, specific to the black community. And if you can't sit with the experience of the pain, the trauma, the denial of humanity, the violence, the negative narratives, the jokes, the myth of the meritocracy, and that the reality that you would not volunteer to have your, your children, if you are not black, treated like black children and black people are treated. If you can't sit with that and think of actions from that place, then you're not ready to lead for them. You're not able to make a difference for them. So I'm going to ask that my colleagues today So I'm going to ask that my colleagues today and going forward, sit with black folks. And ask yourself that question.
Thank you for sharing that candid and critical message. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm going to approach it in a way where I'm. You know what I'm afraid of is that just, you know, in a span of hundreds of years, when crises crises arise, especially when it comes to inequities, disparities, I mean, the history is there, we see it. If people don't understand it, I they're just, I don't know. The blueprints, the maps, the systems were all built this way. And for, you know, decades in our region, we've been talking about change. My fear is that we say things and and commit to things with our hearts. But we don't really look at building a new system and having everybody at the table to figure it out. And my fear is that people want to go back to normal and that's. I mean, I don't even, I hear people say that I I don't, I just get angry because we can't. We can't do that. I mean, there has to be a new way of doing our work at the council that represents people, all people. And so one of the things that as a white woman who currently lives in the suburbs, although I grew up poor in Midway, St. Paul, lived on the north side. Got my interest in community service there and politics and everything. But I think that, and I, you know, I, I just think that we can look internally at our systems within Met Council, and then we can look externally as we work with partners in the region. And I, I think that because we are a big bureaucratic agency of government, that it's going to be very difficult for us to challenge ourselves in the ways that will be necessary to really break what isn't working and build a new. So I don't, I mean, we can come up with ideas and we should. But I guess I would reflect on what council member Alice Ingabretson said too. And, you know, trying to wrap our heads around, as by the way, the most diverse Met Council, I believe, in history, when we were all appointed, that we we go beyond our normal set of leaders within the council and bring in others with voice that can shed light on things that I, for one, have no comprehension about because I have not had to live through it. And look at our systems in ways that can shed light on how we can do better. And and that's all I have to say. We need to commit to something that gets us somewhere so that we don't find ourselves here in another decade or three decades or 100 years from now. Because that's not acceptable. And I will just say this one other thing too, is we work on this piece of this economic future planning for our region with other partners. I mean, if that's not, if that's not a place to infuse people of color into where we go, I don't know what is. Because prosperity and opportunity need to be available and opportunities and equity for everybody in that scenario. And it feels to me that because there's urgency around COVID and funding, I just don't want us to get so far down the path that, you know, we present something and it really wasn't as inclusive as it needed to be. Although I know our intentions are good, but I just don't think that's enough.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else? Riva.
Thank you. I really appreciate the information and the feedback and the opportunity to express our thoughts as leaders on the council. We have a choice as leaders to take this opportunity to be a part of a revolution towards positive change or not. We have a choice to take the opportunities that we have on the Met Council. Everything that we do, all of our work is important, and we can look at that as an opportunity to either maintain and support the status quo or transform and change to a better world. If we continue to have and do our work with the status quo and say, this is the way our system is designed, this is the way our system is set up, and these are what our limitations are, we will not move to the place where we want to go. We want to go to a world which is a better place for everyone. So if we want to look towards the new normal, we have to be champions for change. We have to take risks. We have to do things differently. And we have to remember that the choices that we make are not just for our own small neighborhood or our own small world. But the choices that we make are going to affect others. Others are looking at us as transformational leaders. The choices that we make are going to impact our communities, our neighborhoods, our state, and together even the global economy. We have a very diverse state in Minnesota. And we have some of the largest inequities in the country, and you've heard that a million times. So let's push in and remember that when we have an obstacle, what do we have to loon and lose and what do we have to gain if we can make some of those bold steps to not just do things in the normal way that we do? To expand and reach out for positive change towards equity in the state of Minnesota in our region.
Thank you. Anybody else have a idea? Councilmember Fredson?
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple, a couple of things. One, as far as Minnesota institutions that I am looking at right now, that I was super impressed with the quickness of the response and the boldness of the decisions, at least in the over the course of last week, the University of Minnesota. And looking at the kind of decisions that they could make in terms of what do we, they are a Minnesota institution that serves all of Minnesota. And they made some decisions over there that not every Minnesotan probably agrees with. But it's a decision that I support and admire, and I hope that that we look at what decisions we can make without legislative approval and and we make those decisions. The second group of folks that I'm waiting to see what they propose are the Posse Caucus in the House and Senate, People of Color and Indigenous Caucus, coming up with ideas for ways that we can change the systems, you know, legislatively. And so my assumption is that there will be some things that they propose that we can move on as a Met Council without legislative approval, and they will come up with some ideas that that, of course, need legislative approval. So and to whatever extent we have the ability to shape the likelihood of that legislation becoming law, either this session, special session, or in future sessions. Those are just two things I wanted to share.
Thanks, Chris.
Chair, can I, can I speak now?
Yes, please.
Hi, this is Francisco. Just a couple of things that I would like to to share. The first one is regarding the statement from the council that you are drafting right now. One thing that I I think that we are losing a little bit of perspective as to what's happening right now. A lot of the focus on the rioting and the burning of property. I'm hearing that there's people making the equivalency that the murder of Mr. Floyd is bad, but so is the destruction of property. I will submit that that's not only insulting, but it's also obscene to even go there. I will give you the flippant sounding remedy for the burning and destruction is rebuilding. And that's the end of that conversation. I don't think that we can have a one sentence response like that to how we dismantle the systemic issues. The easy thing is to rebuild the prop, the buildings, the mords, the brick and mortar. I don't think that we need to say more than that in any statement. However, what we, what needs to be done to to dismantle the systemic racism, the incompetence and and heavy handedness of the Minneapolis Police Department and other departments in the state, that's going to take years and way much work than rebuilding the whole city of Minneapolis from the ground up. So I think that's where the emphasis has to be as opposed to anything else related to the economic or other impacts of the current crisis. And one last thing is that I think echoing what other folks have said here before is we have the opportunity to be bold. The time for, you know, half measures or to tread carefully died last week with Mr. Floyd. I think now is the time for only bold and dramatic action. Because otherwise, we'll be here again, having this conversation, either us or our children and grandchildren, and discuss the same issues all over again. So let's move forward. Let's move forward boldly and keeping an eye on on the prize, which is making sure that people are treated fairly. And and that should be the one and only concern of any steps that we take into the future. So thank you for this opportunity, Chair Sally.
Thank you, councilmembers. Any other comments? Sure. Hey, Chris. Go ahead.
So, thank you, Chair. You know, I think no, I, most of my career have been sort of a numbers guy. And so, you know, I think if you look at the data, as an agency, we're a phenomenal transit agency. And we've got, you know, really one of the best in the nation systems from the, you know, for sewer and wastewater. But I think the data also tells us that as an agency, we have failed the people of Minnesota when it comes back. And I really think, you know, when you look at at the last governor and even the current governor, you know, to date, we failed the people of Minnesota, in particular, as the name pointed out, the African American people that live in the state. And I think the challenge that we have is, the agency, we haven't heard that from the governor. I'm going to apologize for a number of other things. But if we can't admit that we have really failed over the last decade, two decades, generations, and we can simply tweak and modify somewhat on the edges what we need to do, we will never get there. You know, and as I reflect, you know, I moved here 20 years ago. You know, and as I reflect now, I really think that was probably the worst decision I ever made. I moved from Toronto. I didn't know what getting a DWB driving while black was until I moved. So for people, for us to fix systemic issues that exist here, we have to first admit the scope and depth of the problem that we have. We have to treat it like a crisis. We see what happens when the governor has a crisis that he faces like we have with COVID. We bring everybody together, we put money to work, and we treat it like the crisis it is. Either this is truly a crisis and this is something that we want to fix, or we don't really think it is. But if it is, we need to allow the data to drive our thinking. We need to make significant investments. We found half a billion dollars for a Viking stadium. Maybe we could find half a billion dollars to to change the the outcome from with respect to racial equity. But that first step, and I think in our statement, we should, we should say that we looking at the data, we have failed to do what we set out to do a couple of decades ago with respect to racial equity. And moving forward, we are going to do things differently so we don't continue to fail over the next decade for our children. And I think we can be very clear about what those objectives are. We can lay them out now. And then we can work together with the business community, the other government agencies, and hopefully with the backing of the governor, if it is a priority for him, to fund it and to make right on those objectives and continue to measure and publish the data and hold ourselves and our peers accountable to achieving those goals within our own organizations and brothers. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Goodman. I'm sorry, that customer Ferguson, I'm reading at the same time. Riva, did you have something?
Yes, I just was trying to put in the chat and I did get a request for someone who wanted to get the email again for how to make a public comment. And my suggestion was to include that information in future agendas, if possible.
Yes, excellent. And we shouldn't just say it out loud. But if those that are listening, we can put it in the chat box. And that's a helpful suggestion to put in the agenda. Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for your comments. I, I think that was really valuable messages that had some congruency about the road we're on, the road that actually has a fork in the road, that it's one toward a reset, one that's bold, that we can't just restore to normal. Because what is that? That's not, that's a failure. That we actually look with open eyeballs at what we have failed as a region. And we won't be able to correct unless we have data, a plan, and let, not that ideas are bad, but only ideas that are truly actionable and committed to. And we have to maybe even start by holding ourselves accountable. So this is not any way to finish, but it is a way to to start. And I think this was, we will put together a statement about the bold choices. And often we are, as individuals and even as an entity, we're we're looking to get permission. So I think I love the themes of what do we have in our power to to move forward with. And knowing that Met Council lives within its statutory authority, but we as individuals can lead not just within our internal organization, but with partners. Chris mentioned the business community, other governments, we're a tool for, we're a planning agency, but we're more than a planning agency. So it's, it's kind of what we wanted. And and I, and I'm really so impressed with what everybody has has said with, from their hearts and and with a real sense of like, let's get going. So we don't want to be just talking. We want to be stirring action. So I want to segue to our business item, if, which is important that we uh, I want to segue to our business item if, which, uh, is, uh, important that we, uh, want to hear about, uh, some DBE goal setting. That in itself is one that is worthy of some explanation and some debate. And I think it is, uh, one that, uh, is somewhat has resonance with this conversation. But until you put a stake in the ground, uh, and know what that goal is and, and something to measure against, then do we ever make progress? So, um, I want to, with your permission, kind of, uh, leave some time, uh, both for Ashanti and for Elaine Ogilvy, Ashanti Payne. If you're there, uh, maybe you can, this is more informational. We're not acting on it. In fact, it's, we've got a little time, uh, as I know, going forward, uh, where this would become actually, uh, you know, uh, that the truly goals that are adopted. But you can explain the process as well as the actual substance of your presentation, and then we'll open it up to have more of a conversation.
Thank you, Chair Zelli. Um, I'm going to turn the presentation component over to Elaine Ogilvy. And, um, I will be available to address any questions.
Great. Thanks. Welcome, Elaine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Council members, I appreciate, um, the opportunity to talk through the, three year, three year DBE program goal for both FTA and EPA today. I'm gonna walk through, starting with the FTA program goal. I'm gonna walk through why we're, why we set these goals, how we're doing on our current goal, and then, uh, walk into what are, what we are proposing for the next three years as a goal and the methodology behind how we, uh, came, came to that goal. So I will start with, you, you have the presentation in front of you, and I know that there was, um, some additional documentation provided as well, that, that all goes hand in hand with this. Next slide. Okay, so as I, as I did mention, the first thing I'm gonna talk about is the Federal Transit Administration, or, or known as FTA, DBE program goal. And the FTA federal program, uh, DBE program was originally created to level the playing field for disadvantaged business enterprises, also known as DBEs, to ensure non discrimination in the award of federally assisted contracts. There's a reference to the, the federal regulation. Each recipient of USDOT funding, so in the case of Metro Met Council, our UST funding, USDOT funding comes uh, from the Federal Transit Administration. Each recipient of UST DOT funds is responsible for setting an overall DBE program goal every three years. The goal methodology that we use to set the three year program goal is, uh, prescribed and outlined in federal regulation as referenced in the slides. The, the goal and the methodology behind it is reflective of the level of DBE participation that we would expect to see absent the effects of discrimination. Our semi annual reporting that we do to FTA done in both June and December every year tracks the DBE utilization achievement that we, that we achieve towards our three year goal. Our DBE goal for our current triennium, uh, federal fiscal years 2018 through 2020 is 15%. The goal achievement is based on contracts that are awarded. And the data through March 31st of 2020, uh, it shows that in this triennium, we have awarded about 598 contracts. 266 of those contracts awarded went to DBE firms. And as of, uh, the, the 2019 and 2020, uh, achievement, we are at 11.2%. To talk a little bit about the goal calculation methodology, uh, there's a lot of steps to this in, in, it's, can be a bit overwhelming, but I want to just take it step by step. So step one is, uh, per, again, per federal regulation, as they walk through the process on, on how this is to be calculated. Step one is to determine the relative availability. Um, and it's basically weighted by the estimates of future spending. So it takes into account what types of firms are typically used in projects that are assisted by federal, by federal funds. Um, and then step two, uh, is adjusting that base figure, based on some of those calculations of past participation. So to determine the base figure, we calculate what the relative availability of DBE firms is. We start by, uh, identifying what our market or regional market area is. So for the Metropolitan Council, our, our regional market is our seven county metropolitan area. And within that seven county area, we look at the number of ready, willing and able DBEs that are in that area. We use the MNUCP, uh, you know, the Minnesota Unified Certification Program Directory. And we determine how many firms are in that market area for specific scopes, scopes according to the DBE directory. And then we compare it against all the firms in Minnesota using the US Census Bureau's American Fact Finder database. We, we determine how many firms are across Minnesota in those same scopes of work. So determining relative availability, we take these, these two pieces of information. We, we take the three year forecast that, um, that data comes from the engineering staff in, in both transit and environmental service. We have a three year forecast that gives us what those projects are gonna be for the next three years. We break it down by NACs code. And we, we come up with a relative availability by those NACs codes. So, uh, we break it down by NACs code and we divide the number of ready, willing and DBEs in those NACs codes by all of the ready, willing and able firms across the state in those NACs codes. So relative availability, uh, basically shows the raw percentage of DBEs as part of the overall pool. Uh, the relative, relative availability, once we have that number, then it's weighted against what the total spending is to provide for a more accurate dollar value and number for the actual goal setting. So basically, the relative availability is weighted against the actual dollar value. So we can get a very clear, accurate, um, perception of what the, the true potential for, uh, participation could be in those scopes. So our future estimate, estimates of, um, contracts or, or FTA assisted contracts for the next three years included 25 different projects. And across those projects, we identified 27 different NACs codes. So NACs codes is, is, and NACs is, uh, again, just an abbreviation for, um, North American Industry Classification System. It's, the code is, every business is assigned certain codes. It, it all depends on the type of work that they specialize in. So for the 25 projects that are anticipated to be awarded in the next three years, we broke it down into 27 scopes of work. Using the relative availability and the percentage of future spending for each NACs code, uh, the weighted availability provided a base figure of 10%. We adjusted the base figure, uh, using the following steps. And, and again, this is according to the methodology outlined in federal regulation. So once you have the base figure, you can then adjust it using median past DB, DBE participation. So we took the median participation from 2015 to 2019, which was 15%. The adjusted base figure is the average of the base figure and the median of past participation. And you can see in the calculation, uh, our base figure was 10%. Our median of past participation for the last five years was 15%. You average that and it gives you a calculation of 12.5% and round it up to a whole number, brings you to 13%. OEO is proposing a 13% FTA DBE goal for the next triennium of 2021 through 2023. Next, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the other piece of the, the program goal, and that's our EPA, DBE program. And that is our environmental service contracts, the, the original funds, um, start with EPA and are funded through the PFA and eventually get to the Met Council for environmental service contracts. Again, uh, EPA has federal programs to create a level playing, playing field for DBEs. It is in, outlined in their federal regulation as well for DCFR 33. However, in 2019, um, EPA suspended their requirement for recipients to set a three year goal, three year DBE program goal. Despite that suspension, the Met Council in practice has committed to consistent use of FTA DBE program requirements, um, in place of the, the EPA DBE program. So even though they, the EPA suspended that requirement, the Met Council is still moving forward in practice to set the standard and expectation, uh, for our, our contracts and will continue to uh, set a three year goal for EPA assisted, uh, contracts. We are in the process of updating our internal policy, allowing the council to officially adopt FTA DBE program requirements as our EPA program, um, official processes and procedures. So we will run our EPA program simultaneously and synonymous with the FTA, uh, DBE program. Again, it's important for the council to maintain this practice as these goals do establish a standard of expectation. The EPA goal for the, the last triennium for EPA, 2017 through 2019 was 14%. Full achievement for EPA contracts was not based on award, but is, is based on amount paid to DBE firms. And again, that was, um, how EPA outlined their program requirements at the time. So achievement based on, uh, amounts paid on active projects. Data through October 1st of 2019, uh, shows a 12.3 DBE achievement. Future spending, uh, for the next three years for EPA assisted contracts, uh, we had 20 projects and we had, we were able to break that down into 19 different NACs codes across those projects. Again, using the same methodology as we did with FTA, using relative availability and the percentage of future spending for the codes, the weighted avail, availability, um, provided the base figure for EPA assisted contracts of 7.4%. Adjusting the base figure for EPA, the median past DBE participation from 2015 to 2019 was 14.4%. Adjusting that base figure and averaging it with the median came to a calculation of 10.9%, rounding it up to 11%. OEO's proposed, uh, EPA DBE program for the next triennium, 2021 through 2023 is 11%. Some considerations that, um, just to keep in the, the back of the, our mind, um, OEO is mindful of certain things, even though it, it does not play a role in the actual math and the methodology of, of where those proposed goals are coming from is something that we are, are definitely not, um, definitely know we, we need to continue to consider. So the next triennium definitely may be affected by our, by our current market conditions as, um, compared to previous years. Our forecasting definite for future, uh, the projects for the next three years is definitely not as large as what it was in the past. Our DBE pool is finite and is, is being exhausted by previously awarded large contracts such as Southwest Light Rail. Many of the same contractors that work on both EPA, many of the same contractors work on both EPA and FTA contracts. Many of our contractors that work on our transit also work on ES, which make it very difficult when they are, um, committed to a very large subcontract on Southwest Light Rail. Some of their capacity is, is compromised only because, um, they, they are consumed by that large project. A report in 2019, and this is strictly for EPA funded projects, a report that, that OEO staff created in 2019 showed that 80, 86% of the EPA funded construction contracts were performed by only five DBEs. Two of them minority owned and three of them one woman owned. I, I know for sure that one of those DBE minority owned firms is committed to Southwest Light Rail right now and has communicated to us that they likely will not, um, continue to bid on projects until that one is done. Um, again, so these same firms currently committed to large FTA contracts is draining their capacity and something we need to consider. Additional considerations are, uh, obviously the effects of COVID on the DBE, um, community is not yet known, but must be considered. Uh, we're mindful that the effects to small businesses and the challenges that they face, um, as they, they move forward are, are real. OEO feels that the goals that we have, uh, proposed are reasonably attainable. Program, our, our commitment to the program, the DBE program, uh, remains solid and continuing. Our dedication to increasing the opportunities and goal setting activity also remains, um, at, at the forefront of our priorities. As the goal methodology prescribes, the DBE program goals for fiscal year 2021 through 2023 are proposed as follows. OEO proposes 11% EPA DBE program goal and a 13% FTA DBE program goal. And with that, I, uh, Shanti and I are available for questions.
Any questions, comments, Rick?
Okay, um, so I'm, I'm a chart person. So I, it's easy for me to kind of look at a graph that says, okay, we're looking at the EPA goals and the FCA goals. And I'm seeing that we went from EPA goal 2017 to 2019 of 14 down to, um, 11 as proposed going forward. And FTA 2017 to 2019 was 15 going down to 13 FTA goal. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, earlier in our meeting, we spoke about challenging ourselves. I know that we have challenging times, um, but I feel like instead of going forward, we're going backwards as far as the goal. It seems like we're lowering the goal. I'm not convinced that that's what we should be doing. I think we need to stretch ourselves a little bit more. If we have challenges, sometimes we have to look at, look, let's see if we can do what we did last time. Be creative, stretch ourselves. So I think we, we at least, you know, go back to where we were.
Uh, Councilmember Ferguson, did you, uh, wanna comment? I, I know you've not been tracking this at all. No, I'm just kidding. Of course. I I know you've not been tracking this at all. No, I'm just kidding. Of course.
So I think I just, you know, I think there's, I think there's other ways to think about it, right? So I guess, you know, if you were, you know, in a business environment, you'd be looking at and saying, looking at the legislation, looking at the rules and say, how could we get to a higher goal? I understand that this is the way we've done it in the past. But I think we should have to ask ourselves, is there another way to look at rules and regulations that would allow us to come to different conclusions? Just to put in perspective, right? So, you know, I've been in the DV database or if any other business has been in the DV database. Let's say we've been in that database for 10 years. We've done great work. We've decided to bid on the council work for 10 years. But in the 11th year, we choose not to register. We wouldn't be included in the numerator. Even though we didn't go out of business, we just decided we don't want to do business with the council. On the reverse side, if I just throw up a sign, register on a website and call myself a plumber or a construction company, and I've never even done a project, but that's the way I register myself, I'm included in the denominator. So we require our minority businesses to provide us with financial information on an annual basis, a whole bunch of information upfront to be included with positive action that must be taken and a demonstration that that there's, that they can do that work and that they are truly owned by a minority, by a minority or a woman or a veteran in this program. But there's an assumption that every firm that's registered in an NICS code is ready, willing and able when you're a majority owned firm. And that to me is is sort of a classic bias as to why we are in the position we are in today. Because we're not willing to challenge the thinking. And we may say, you know, the federal government created a program that has inherent bias in it. And we're just following that. I don't think we can accept. We have to find a way to look at the rules differently and 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 look at and find a way to to bring ourselves to a to a to a different conclusion. And it might take some good legal work and it might take some good thinking and it might take some work to find other agencies around the country have maybe thought about it differently. But I think it's it's just, we we can't, we we can't just say that status quo is is okay, and this is what the numbers produce, which it which it is, and this is what our staff has been asked to do up till now. But I think what we should be doing is asking them to do something different.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember Thompson.
I want to thank Chris for his words and comments on this. This was at the management committee and we had, I think, a pretty good discussion around this, raising these points. I know Councilmember Alice Ingabritson sat in on that with us virtually. I know we, I I just want to second everything Chris that said. I want to challenge the notion that the, you know, federal government's prescribing something, but you know, I would say that again, if 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 the system isn't working for our goals or for our efforts, then we need to challenge that. I would also say that part of the comments I made at the management committee is that if we have DBEs that are on other projects, and so there's scarcity for future projects. I I think we have a great opportunity as somebody who's got money to spend in this region to help whoever build the pipeline of future minority and women and veteran owned businesses to understand that there's a a market and a pent up demand. And there are organizations out there in our region, I mentioned a couple at the meeting, that maybe we could start to build a pipeline so that the numbers change within whatever equation we're working with. And again, I don't know if this was stated, but on the list, if it's only those DBEs that are in the seven county metro or if we can go statewide, because I know there are firms across the state that maybe minority business or veteran owned that could be doing work in the seven county metro. So I I don't know that. I don't want to assume anything, but I just don't know what piece of the pool we're using or how we're, what what numbers are in the pool. I, again, I I think it's interesting that on FTA, it's projects awarded, but on EPA, it's amount awarded. I also don't know, and I should know this, but the census data, that must be updated with estimates annually. So we're not dealing with outdated information. And I would just agree with Chris, you know, the bias on the ready, willing and available or able to me falls very, very short. It, I, you know, from everything I've learned on this, I I feel like the bar is set so much higher for our DBEs. And and other businesses don't have to meet those same hurdles. So I I just, that's all I'll say. But again, just for the full council, this was, we we've been wrestling with this at management.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilmember, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to ask a quick question because because we can, the way I have always understood this is we can continue to do, set our own DBE goals and our MNCAP goals and per project, per per product or service spend, the way that we've been doing it. And I think we continue to push these edges. But as I understand it, like these numbers that get reported are really done for formula to get federal funds. That doesn't preclude, had do or having this for these, the EPA and FTA numbers does not preclude us from actually taking bold or action ourselves.
That these are goals, whether we meet them or not, it is what we hold ourselves publicly accountable to. But we have to look through the process for federal programs.
This is a process thing where I think that like where we've been taking the MNCAP and DBE programs in general is headed the right direction. We clearly have found there's a long ways to go, whether it's to the points that Chris was making or the points that Julie was making of how do we expand the pool and how do we increase all of that? But I think it's it's almost two different things. So I just want to make sure that, because I would still want to hold us to to higher standards, but it's just a, it feel, it's a process thing to get federal funds into into our programs.
Yeah, there are two separate programs, right? The MNCAP is we set our own goal, the MNCAP program, that's what we decide we want to do. The DBE is more of a federal program. It is about federal funds, but those numbers do end up influencing. There's a lot of contracts, right?
Right. But like it says, for Southwest LRT, we set a higher DBE goal and a and a higher workforce goal. So that's something that we can, we can do and and we can continue to do. It doesn't, we are not constrained by these numbers is what I'm saying.
Yeah, workforce is separate. That's separate.
Right. But we did both, you know.
Okay, I want to give Olivia and Ashanti, do you have any comments or thoughts on this that you'd like to respond? I mean.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, council members, I'll, sorry, Ashanti, because I beat you to the punch. But I definitely want, would like you to add to my comments. But I will add that I I agree that what was just said is absolutely correct. This, this is a requirement for for federal funding, to receive from federal funding. We need to set these goals. But there, it's also correct that even though, yes, we have these overall program goals, that does not preclude us from exceeding them in in any way. It does not influence when we look at a particular project like Southwest Light Rail or or any of these BRT projects, any project for that matter, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. When we look at a particular project, we look at it individually. And if it looks like, like there's availability for participation that is 20%, we will set a 20% goal on that contract. It it's not a, it's not, you know, if if we go with the proposed 13% FTA goal, that doesn't mean that we look at every contract and make sure that we set a 13% goal on that. Even though it it's a baseline to start from, our individual project goals will be created on an individual basis according to what the availability is for that project. And Ashanti, you want to add to that?
Yes. Chairs, Eli, council members. I just wanted to mention that these same thoughts, conversations, considerations are the same discussions that we had. And also lead to our strategies in terms of how do we increase that numerator? And focusing in on how how to increase that numerator so that those numbers go up. I also want to say that, yes, some of the, some of the methodology are things that we can't adjust. But yes, we have looked at other jurisdictions, other agencies in terms of how do we incorporate some of those businesses that Councilmember Ferguson is talking about? Businesses who have either become disgruntled with the council and said, okay, I'm not going to bid to the council. Or how do we get those businesses back? Businesses that aren't certified, even though that we can't count towards our goal, but they are owned by women and people of color. And how do we, how do we incorporate those businesses? And there are ways within the methodology that you can consider in your adjustment period, not in your base goal calculation. For instance, I've seen methodologies where they take into account the rate of formation of businesses, businesses that are not even or or exist in the marketplace today. What's the rate of formation of businesses in the marketplace for people of color? As opposed in comparison to majority owned businesses? And if you've read any of the reports or have been at presentations for Dr. Corey or Dr. Myers, we do know that businesses owned by people of color are forming at a greater rate over the last five years. So there are ways to incorporate that. And I know that historically, the council has used our own staff to to go through this process of our goal setting. But in in conversations that I've had with Si and staff, I I know that there is support in terms of having an outside consultant assist with that process. I did reach out to some other agencies, particularly Mendot. Just for a frame of reference, Mendot spent 121,500 for their FHWA goal and 13,500 for their FTA goal for frame of reference. So these are the conversations we're having. Yes, I was just as concerned that we would be going down from the last triennium. But also other factors that I think have led to that is the type of projects. We don't have a Southwest Light Rail project that was included in Botino or Blue Line Extension is not in this particularly triennium. And we know that those projects are diverse in the types of scopes of work and activities. And we usually set high goals on those projects because we have a lot of DBs that perform a lot of those work scopes. And also comparatively, looking at, you know, some of our service operator contracts where we don't get any participation and you have multiple $25 million projects without DB participation, that can really have an impact on the numbers. So our strategy has been to, how do we engage with MTS mixed group? We have begun doing that to talk about strategies of how we can incorporate DB participation. What what is the best, are there areas where we can initiate mentor protege relationships to build capacity? Where's the road for technical building that pipeline to increase that numerator? So I just want to make sure that you're not alone in in some of your concerns. And we are actually developing strategies and and trying to put those strategies into action to raise that numerator.
All right. Thank you, Ashanti. I know that Councilmember Atlas Ingabritson had a comment.
Thanks, Chair. I wanted to just say that it's not just the work of this office to accomplish these goals. They're the ones who have to come before us and present it. But both the goals and the accomplishing of the goals sit in the responsibility of the regional administrator of every budget manager inside the organization. It's their responsibility to identify, give business and maintain positive relationships with these businesses. And we do not have a great reputation or practice in this space. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I'd love to see some type of accountability for that. I dealt with my own narratives at Minneapolis Public School saying we couldn't reach certain goals. It was impossible. If you accept that, then you accept it and it's what the outcomes are what they are. The one thing I will say, I'm really tired of having to ask for every time is racially disaggregated data. I don't want to have to ask for that anymore. When we look at that data, African Americans and the gaps between them and white women in our programs are not acceptable in comparison to the population we collect tax dollars from. I don't want to have to ask that question anymore. I've said this before. The last thing I'll say, if we can set our own goals and they're higher, then I I really am still not understanding why we have to reduce this number. Or can we have an explicit joint side policy statement? Whatever that marries those two goals together in an institutionally kept measured way.
Thank you for your comment. I think we could continue to debate and maybe we should. I will just quickly say in my own experience with DBE goals, which is a federal program, it is a bit frustrating because it only is in projects that are federal projects funded through federal projects. The idea of report cards and goals is really important. I love the idea, if I think I got it right from you, Chair Atlas Ingabritson is what is it that we want to see and maybe our own goals? I almost think we need our own report card. That's kind of, I mean, just want to throw that out there because I think we get hamstrung by federal bureaucratic requirements. And I, this is something that the OEO really deals with, but maybe we ought to be thinking more broadly. Just a couple of our comments, I'm very respectful of the time and I don't, certainly don't want to cut this off. No, go ahead, Councilmember Chambers. I know you raised your hand. But I want to, I want to make sure that we 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 at least give this as an open item to continue the conversation. Councilmember Chambers, did you just come up? Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I think we heard it through several council members that, you know, we're we're not restricted by the federal goal or the EPA goal. We we can set our own goal. We can go higher than what is required. And I also want to say to this Councilmember Atlas Ingabritson, who had to get off the call, that she is not alone in requesting the disaggregated data. She is not alone in understanding the value of that data. At some point, I think we we need to have a discussion about that. At some point, I think we we need to have a discussion about that as a council.
Right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, thoughts? I want to bring people's attention that there was a comment of somebody wanted to make a public comment. They emailed a number of us in this council. And I said, well, if it's a comment, I'm happy to read it. It is a very long comment relating to a specific contractor's experience. So I'm not sure that that necessarily is appropriate to read the old council after reading the comment. But I'm happy to share with anybody who has an interest. But it does talk about some of the contracting processes. Councilmember Chandler?
I hate to be a stickler, but I think we should be a stickler about our process and how we plan to do that going forward. In the past, our public comments were at a certain time in the agenda. And we need to decide if we're going to change that. It's normally at the beginning.
I think that's really fair and I think we need to clarify it. We have, when we have had comments for the public, it has been limited to three minutes at the beginning in person about items that are not on the agenda. And I think during this period of time when we were virtual, there is just actually tech with council. There is no requirement under open meeting law to have public comments, but it is a practice that we have had in the past when we were in person. And in the issue of transparency, we want to be as much as possible. But there's no statutory requirement, but there has been a practice. So I think that's a really good point. And I think we need to clarify what and when those are available. And if we do want to make accommodation, in the interest of transparency, we've tried to offer an opportunity for the public to engage through either emails or a public email. And I think maybe giving greater clarity to an expectation is what that is, is is something that I think we can, we can do and we should do. So that's a fair comment. Any other business or comments at this point? I know we've gone a little bit over, but that was a big meeting. We did a lot. Councilmember Lindstrom?
I'm going to end right at the end here, Mr. Chair. Would you mind just sending that public comment email that some of you received to the entire council?
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
No, I'm happy to do that. Anything else? Well, hearing none, thank you so much for all of your thoughts. If there's any theme for this this evening, it is our work is not done and we have work to do. So enjoy this beautiful evening and know that we look forward to engaging more individually. I have to say, personally, having a conversation with all of you with just more a real time thinking as opposed to just just listening, we listen to each other, is really valuable. But also a great credit to our staff who have been living and breathing their work, particularly over the past week. But as always, and 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 I appreciate everything that is done, even for tonight's presentations. Farewell. I will call us adjourned. We will see you all very soon. Call or write if you have any thoughts. Chair's up.